Hello and good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, June 6, 2016, and we are in a regular session of council. It is on around 7:02 PM. First, beginning with our agenda, we're establishing a quorum with all members present this evening. President Nysely will be sitting in as our acting mayor this evening. And I will be our president pro tem and will also be a voting member of council. Funny reminder to those in the audience too, as well as council members and anyone in the room, please put your phones on silent mode or turn them off. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a motion to amend the agenda this evening so that we can move our first readings to the beginning of the agenda after communications and reports from other officials, and then we'll follow it up with third reading and then second reading will be last. Is there a motion to do so?
I move to move. I move that we have our first readings placed at the first part of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we have amended our agenda. We then need to appoint an acting clerk for this evening. I do believe we have a volunteer, and Member Katsas, is there a motion to appoint Member Katsas as our clerk for the evening?
Still moved.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Member Katsas, for volunteering to be our acting clerk this evening. Disposition of minutes, we have the regular session of minutes held from May 16, 2016. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Minutes have been adopted. Moving on to communications. Is there communications from council members first?
I do have one I'd like to share.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a little audio visual to hold up for folks. Many of your children, if you have children in the public schools, might have received this. This is a program from the Athens Public Library's Summer Reading Program. And for those who have expressed interest in learning more about the bag reduction issue in Athens, this program might be of particular interest to folks. There'll be a bag factory opportunity for children and their families to come in and construct their own bags. And that'll take place not only in the Athens branch of the public library, but a number of other branches as well. And there's more information about that online at myacpl.org.
Thank you, Member Cochran. Any other announcements, or communications rather, from council members? I'll briefly announce too that we have an application in front of us from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, from GSC of Athens, Inc., I believe formerly the Gold Star Chili, or DBA Gold Star Chili. And this is for a D1 permit. Responses must be postmarked no later than 6/13/2016. And it's been communicated to me that the D1 designation is for beer only, or for on-premise only consumption, or sealed container for carryout. So, wanted to make this aware to council members and the public at large. Any communications or thoughts on council members?
I have a question. Is this a new business going in?
I am not 100% sure. I don't believe so.
It's the diner.
It's a new permit.
New permits, thank you.
I'm just not familiar with any place in Athens known as Gold Star Chili.
Union Street Diner.
Okay. Thank you.
Believe in the former, yeah. Thank you. Any other communications from council members? Moving on to Law Director Lisa Eliason.
No, no communications.
Thank you. And our acting mayor, Chris Nysely.
Thank you. I don't have any communications, but we do have with us tonight our director of Public Works, Mr. Andy Stone, who is here with communications about several issues coming before council in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Butler and members of council. Two items of communication. In the event that this body decides a special session next week, I wanted to bring two items that have not come before you, so that you can hear about it in this forum prior to a coming before us in a reading. Number one, a couple months ago, we moved with the School Safety Committee, which is a collaboration between Athens City Schools and the Athens City Police Department and the administration to improve safety around our area of schools. We went to look to do improvements at the West State and Lancaster traffic signal. As you may remember, there was a child struck a couple months ago. The investigation yielded that the signal didn't have anything to do with that. However, that signal is in pretty bad shape, in pretty bad disrepair. We would like it to be more visible. We'd like it to be able to operate a little better and have at least the option of adding a couple of phases. We've worked with the president, I'm sorry, the principal of the school and talked about how operation would happen. I was hoping to get the signal pulled together and built this summer for less than $50,000, and use already appropriated money in anticipation of getting done prior to school being back in session. I think I could still meet that timeline, but I don't think I can do it for less than $50,000. So, I'm going to ask you probably next week, or as soon as you're going to have a session, or a meeting rather, to hear an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $75,000. Now, there may be some appropriations with that, but we may use some appropriations that are already in place. So, I do not anticipate a full $75,000 new appropriation, but that would be something that, in the hope of getting it done before school is back in session, and knowing that council could be out of pressure here in July, I wanted to go ahead and talk about this. If you have any questions, I certainly can answer those. The second item, same topic except a much smaller issue. We've come to discover that there's a particular device that the internal service, the city mechanics have to service air conditioning machines on vehicles, or air conditioning systems on vehicles, that is not working very well. We need to dispose of it. It's valued at over $1,000, so that requires council action to allow us to dispose of it, the way we intend to dispose of it, is a trade-in for a new one. So, that would be another item that I will bring next time you hold a session. If it's next week, it would be next Monday. Otherwise, I don't have any other communications. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Director Andy Stone, thank you. Okay, moving forward then, if we've covered all communications from elected officials as well as council members, we're moving on to ordinances now, since we amended this agenda for first reading. So, we're on ordinance 8516, an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. As you stated, the ordinance has amended the 2016 appropriation ordinance. It goes as follows. Section 1 of the 2016 appropriation ordinance, 12015, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. $2,300 to unclaimed funds, 903 TC 600, and $49,000 to general fund, other administration, 101.120 TC 300, for BWC refund check and increase in the total appropriations by set amount. Section 2, this ordinance will go into effect full force, the passing approval by the mayor. Is there any reason from the administration to suspend the rules, or can this have three readings?
Can have this read.
Okay, so we've read it for the first time.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 8616, an ordinance authorizing sidewalk enhancements on West Union Street. This is project number 305, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. We spent quite a lot of time at our last committee meeting discussing this and the scaled-down version of what administration was asking for, for West Union. I think it's pretty clear for council to look through and see the different fund lines and what we're looking at. Last week, we had the mock-up drawing for people to see. So, Director Stone, can you fill us in a little bit, and then we'll have questions from council if there are any questions?
Sure. They asked me to go to the podium. My microphone is not working.
Okay.
My microphone is not working.
I don't think you need one.
Just for the people at home.
They can hear you too.
Sure. Okay. So, the ordinance before you is for a $75,000 appropriation and authorization to do the scaled-down version of enhancements on the West Union Street block between Congress Street and Court Street. We're going to build this in several different ways, with some of those expenditures coming from these new appropriations, and some coming from money that has already been appropriated and is in the operating funds actually. There's a storm sewer that needs constructed in order to support the redeveloped buildings that are in that area, and I'm going to do that with city forces. And that will happen very rapidly, so that construction can continue on track. Additionally, there's a new curb that will need to be constructed, which I believe I can do with money that's already been appropriated and not part of this new appropriation, and do it in conjunction with replacement of the sidewalk, replacement of the sidewalk and curb for the buildings that are being reconstructed. So, both of those would happen relatively rapidly and early to mid-July. What this new appropriation would cover would be three things, three to four things. Number one, it would be the repaving of West Union Street in order to have clean asphalt that we could go and do the new markings with a different lane configuration on them. Additionally, it would put all of the, I guess I call it the gingerbread, the items between the existing sidewalk and the new curb. So, we're talking about street trees, street lighting, bike racks. And the one location that we identified is perhaps having bike racks, as well as any type of pavement in that space. That is to say, concrete pavement or decorative concrete pavement, what have you, for the sidewalks. The last item, the additional $75,000 we'll cover, will be signage in support of parking. Now, we believe one of the goals of the mayor is to go to these park mobile kiosks, so you don't have an individual meter cluttering up every space. And we believe we can pay for that out of parking appropriations that are already in place. But these new appropriations should be plenty to cover that space in between the curb and the new sidewalk, and that will be a portion that I will have to bid, obviously, being greater than $50,000. And that's the reason why we're asking you to authorize and appropriate money. And I can answer any further questions if you have any.
Thank you. Council questions? Member Paul.
I'd like to point out, a lot of times in the newspaper and stuff, people throw out that this pedestrian plaza, or whatever, you know, some of them are calling it pat plaza, is X amount of money. But because of the rebuilding of the storm sewer and associated paving, curbing, that money would be spent no matter whether the sidewalk was expanded or not. And the second point is, I think that we're spending, developing, that business owners down there are spending so much of their money, making sure that, you know, it's going forward and doing really good, you know, historic preservation and such, that if we just did, even if we didn't expand the sidewalk and reconfigured the street, that we'd still want to do beautification down there, such as trees and such. So, a lot of this is not necessarily new money that is expanded beyond what would already be needed because it's a redevelopment after a disaster. Is that there?
I would agree. Certainly, the storm sewer is something that we most likely would have to construct anyway. You know, the property is drained before they burn down. They're not draining now, and we're trying to figure out why. And so, the city, we made the determination that we need to install a new sewer to support that.
And the curb. Curb's very expensive, isn't it?
It is, it is. And, you know, it's certainly in disrepair, and there'll be a new 350 feet or so block of curb in the uptown area, as well as new pavement.
Thank you. Other questions? Member Katsas.
Thank you. Engineer Stone, I guess my first question is, would the timeline for the reopening of the street, is it going to be extended because of the additional work?
I think that the reopening of the street will not be extended. It should still coincide with the timeline that the contractor is supporting the reconstruction of the burned buildings anticipated. That is to say, open back up to four lanes of traffic. That said, well, two lanes of traffic and two parking lanes, excuse me. That said, the portion that I refer to as the gingerbread, the stretch in between the back of the curb and the new sidewalk that has the trees, the lighting, the new perhaps decorative pavement, and any other street-side features that we would fit in that area, will have to get bid, and that will extend into September, I anticipate. September possibly, even early October, depending on how bids happen. I could see a contractor doing such an install, needing to bag meters, or I guess it wouldn't be bagging meters if we're not going to put meters back, right? But occupy the parking lane, whereas the two full driving lanes probably could be open in around the same timeframe that the contractors building the buildings would have reopened anyway.
And then my second question is, I had requested the traffic council, I think were done back in April. Is that, I mean, I saw a spreadsheet at one point. Is that accessible? Is that something I can still?
Certainly, I can give that to you again. By all means, it's the same. It hadn't changed. That count was done while school was still in session. So, there'll be the turning movement counts at each of the two signals, as well as a week-long count of through movements on that block.
Okay.
By all means, we'll give that to you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Member Cochran.
Thank you. The numbers that you've, that are contained here in this ordinance, those don't include the cost of the park mobile facilities, do they?
I don't have a high enough level of fidelity on that $75,000 to say whether or not I can buy the park mobile equipment within that, where we're going to need to go and expand and go with the existing. It really is kind of a function of how many streetlights we put in, and how many trees. You know, there's a cost associated with that. Contractors right now have a lot of work. You know, it's summer, they've already bid, and us putting a job on the street in June, when contractors are already covered up in work, ends up, you know, getting higher prices. If I were to bid this job and we had made this decision that this was the direction we were going to go in January, and I could turn it around and get it on the street, I would tell you definitively I could include that park mobile inside that $75,000. So, my feeling is, if I can include it inside there, I will. If I have to grab it out of another location, it will be out of appropriated money inside the parking fund.
Thank you.
Right now. I will include the pavement, however, inside of this, so that not as to detract from areas that we've already discussed, and you've already appropriated money for annual paving. That should only be about $9,000, I think, the repaving. And then you get another block of repaved up South Street.
Counsel? Any other questions? Acting mayor, any questions? Okay. And I believe that we have a full three readings on this.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, jumping back to ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 7416, an ordinance granting variances from the Athens City subdivision regulations for property located at 329 East State Street and 11 Hudson Avenue. This is lot 660, owned by J. Randall Wheaton, to allow a lot split. And this is introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 7416.
Second.
We talked about this a couple times. Basically, with this lot split, the planning commission has granted various variances, and most of them have to do with setback with the lot lines. Questions?
No questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments from the public? Motion and a second for ordinance 7416. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Your ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 7516, an ordinance granting a revocable license to John Muller, Tom Warner Cable, for the placement of power supply cabinets on the city right-of-way. And this is, this also is introduced by Councilmember Paul.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 7516.
Second.
We talked about this. We had the administration actually ask about options, such as having payment for such right-of-way. It was indicated that we can't do that. Our hands are fairly tied on granting this right-of-way because it is a public entity, public utility entity. So, hence, adopting it.
Thank you, Councilmember Paul. Am I guessing that the previous image that was on the?
Yeah, it's the places for it.
Okay, well, the locations. So, those of you in TV land and in the audience here, we have a map on the screen indicating the locations of these new power supply cabinets and the right-of-way.
I think if we remember when we discussed this, are they about the size of a refrigerator?
They're a little, yeah, they're like a signal box, so.
A signal box size.
And maybe hopefully, with such power cabinets, that it's replacing some of the wires on poles, maybe, because probably I think that they're more durable being in a box, so. But ORC has pretty much said that we don't have a choice.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Audience? Okay, we have a motion and a second for ordinance 7516. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 8116, an ordinance amending ordinance 9-16, authorizing improvements on Franklin Avenue, project number 301. And this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to adopt. Second. 8116. And I'm waiting for my computer to bring it up. Maybe.
I might have it here on paper for you.
It's coming. Thank you. Just to refresh everybody's memory, this is the ordinance that goes through the sums in terms of the cost, but this is for the improvements on Franklin Avenue using CBDG funds, wheel tax funds, street funds, and state highway funds. And let's see if I can remember what the total project cost is. About $230,000. So, folks that know about Franklin Avenue, there are some issues with drainage. It continually has issues with the pavement buckling up due to the drainage issues, and this should satisfy those concerns when completed, as well as new sidewalks, which is a highly walked neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council members? In the public? Okay, we have a motion and a second for ordinance 8116. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 8216, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a lease with the First Presbyterian Church of Athens, Inc., of Athens, Ohio, for the rental of in-lots 15 and 17 in the city of Athens. And this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Tem. I move to adopt 8216.
Second.
As you stated, this ordinance will authorize the Service Safety Director to execute a lease agreement with the First Presbyterian Church of Athens for the rental of the said lots. Let me tell you how much it will be. The first year will be $46,591. The second year will be $47,523. And the third year will be $48,473. This is a three-year contract renewal from the general fund, 101, and 8 TC 300. So, over the next three years, the city will lay out approximately $150,000 for the rental of the lots, which are mainly used by the police department.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. Any other questions or comments from council? Yes, Councilmember McGee.
When this was first mentioned, I had raised certain questions, and I just really wanted to emphasize, I say, had not been answered. I had raised the question of, could it be possible to have some of the police vehicles parked in the parking garage? I was told that there might be a security question. There might be a question of how many vehicles would need immediate access at any point in time. No answers had been given to any of those questions. I was told that we'll get back to you at that last meeting when it was first raised. I mentioned this simply because $150,000 may seem like nothing to most people, but it's these little chips that kind of keep adding up. And this is from the general fund, and I really question whether, where the city has a parking garage right across the street that could surely house all these vehicles, and we have the streets themselves where the vehicles can be parked that would need immediate access to the streets. I really have a question whether this is just not convenience for a few officers to have their private little place costing the city quite a bit of money. And I'm disturbed by the fact that I had not received any kind of response to those questions. So, my feeling is it's inappropriate to go further on this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. President Nysely, acting mayor, any thoughts or comments, perhaps?
I do not have any additional information that was provided by the administration at this point, but I do remember your questions.
Thank you.
One of the things that was mentioned during that, and in other, this has come up before. This is the, every three years, we discuss this. And I think we have investigated using the on-street parking especially. I think one of the things is that when there are big fests and all the stuff, when the horses come, that whole area is commandeered by the, all the horses. We may set up a corral and such. So, I think that there would be issues about making sure that that would be available and such. So, that was something that's come up before. I mean, we have tried looking at this issue creatively the last time the issue came up three years ago. This is something that's, so, we went forward and tried to buy the property, but that wasn't a goer.
Certainly, I can understand why the church does not want to sell the property. It's very valuable, and it's a regular piece of income for them. I appreciate your questions, Member.
McGee.
McGee, sorry. Member McGee.
I remember this time.
I don't know. What are the options? Can it be tabled?
I would move to table.
I would argue against that. We'd have to take a vote, and I'll vote against it. I want this to go through, get it done tonight. We've had three readings, this is the third reading. You know, I don't want more there is to discuss. It's the same old arguments. Can we find a different place? No, there really isn't. No, there really isn't. If we parked all the cars in the parking garage over there, you have an emergency, you have the police flying out of the door here and running across the street to the parking garage to get in their cruisers to get out the door. So, I mean, that's a delay in time right there, so... I mean, how much is public safety worth to you?
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner. I appreciate Councilmember McGee's points and sentiments as well here. We do have a comment from the public here regarding this. I'd like to do so at this moment.
Hi, Eric Lee. I think that early on it was asked, how many spots are you buying for almost $50,000 a year? And I'm not sure if that was ever answered. Do you guys answer that?
Do I have it? No.
Do any of the council people, the president, know how many spots you're buying?
I mean, everybody can visualize the two lots that are out there, and, you know, so whether, whether we can break it down per space. I mean, I walk through it all the time, and it's not more than X amount and not less than, it's like 15 or 20. And I'm, one of the, I think the last time, but one of the, I think one of the problems is that this is one of those things that come up every three years, and we have beaten our head about what to do. And we have talked about going and doing a parking lot, or on the on-street, or trying to buy the piece of property, and how much it is per, whether we can remove all the parking meters out there. So, I guess that it's, it's, there's certain things that, like right-of-way things that the ORC, the Ohio Revised Code, makes us do. There's just certain things, unfortunately, unless somebody comes up with something brilliant, which hasn't been put forward, and I know that the police chief knows that this is a problem, and it's not because he wants to have, you know, parking spots that are really expensive. He's also looked at different alternatives. And, and myself, they put this forward, and they haven't put anything else forward. I'm not going to question because they're the ones who know what they need for their cars, trucks, and horses.
I don't pretend to know the intricate details of what's going on, but it seems to me as a citizen that $150,000 could be used to improve the safety in the parking garage to park police cars. If we don't feel safe parking a police car in the parking garage, should I feel safe parking my car in the parking garage?
I think that we have, I'm going to defer to the police chief on this at this point.
And I also feel like maybe the church doesn't want to sell the property because they have a stable renter. If maybe the city found a solution for a few years, that might help them change. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you.
We do have, my counsel and everyone else, that we, there has, was a period when the lease expired and was not renewed. And believe it or not, the church found other renters very available, that like, oh, wow, at least these spots sell the people.
Thank you. We do have a, I'm sorry, President Nisley.
Yes, that's the point, but that we do have a motion and a second at this point.
Thank you.
And I do hear and respect your comments, Councilmember McGee, and apologize that we weren't able to get that additional information to you. I think one thing to do might be to say, it's renewed today, and if council finds us something that they really want, the finance committee to work with the police chief to find, to investigate now, rather than at the month before the renewal, that that might be an option. And to convey that to the police chief that you're concerned about it and wanting to work on it first. If that's, if that's the goal of the finance committee, then that would be an option.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. We've had comments. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted with one opposition vote. Moving on to ordinance 8416, an ordinance amending ordinance 815 to include redesign of the Stimson mural introduced by Councilmember Butler. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 8416.
Second.
Thank you. Briefly, this ordinance is essentially adding the clarification of the Stimson Avenue mural redesign as supported and suggested by the Essence of Athens and art implementation and moving it into the $15,000 that has been designated for the wastewater treatment plant clarifier art project. So, this would allow some of that money to be directed towards the Stimson Avenue mural redesign. Questions?
So, my question has to do with the, I see that we have the $26,000 to the enhancement fund for the wraps. Well, this, that's the total amount, right?
Correct. $11,000 for wraps.
So, $11,000 for the wraps, which we've been discussing for a couple of years now, and I believe we have the designs all, just, they're ready to go, they just need to be done.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And then the $15,000, we do not have a design yet for the wastewater treatment plant. Is this $15,000 for design or completion? That's where I'm, I'm confused on the Stimson mural redesign and then the wastewater treatment plant. What is the $15,000 paying for?
So, initially, the $15,000 was solely aimed at the wastewater treatment plant clarifiers, public art project.
So, that's the whole project? It was for the design and the completion of the project?
Correct. Painting, the supplies, the artist's time. And the municipal arts commission felt that that was a significant amount of money for just that project, and perhaps we could spread that money further into another public art project.
Okay.
And when digging into the Stimson mural area, it was determined that the, let's see here, that the project was originally supported by a real action and helped funded for with 317 Board money, and both entities are okay in moving forward and allowing the city to pursue art there.
So, so the $15,000 is not just a design, redesign for art there, but it's to complete a project there?
Correct.
Okay, so two projects for $15,000.
Correct. Yes, Councilmember?
And, correct me if I'm wrong, when we do certain types of public works with public funding, there is a requirement by the Ohio Revised Code that we put a certain percentage towards public art. And it's like percent for art is the program, so that's where this money is being generated from that program, is that every time we do some kind of redesign or rebuild, such as like Richland Avenue, there has to be a certain amount of money put into the budget, and that's where the original money came from.
That's my understanding. No comments? Ms. Cochran?
Thank you. I, I realize this is on third reading at this point, but I would just like to suggest that members of AMAC might want to revisit the wastewater treatment plant before moving forward with this project, because the situation, it seems to me like art would be wasted there because it's behind a chain-link fence that obscures view. The tanks were, are buried up further than when originally constructed, and so the panels that are left visible are fairly small to view, so anybody who travels on the bike path can easily see this. So, I would encourage folks to take a walk down there, take, take your bike down there and check out those panels, because I honestly can't see at this point what the point would be of having, spending money on public art on those, those barely visible panels. And of course, I'm a fan of public art in many places around the city, so I hate to throw a wrench in the business.
No, that's a very relevant point. The municipal arts commission did acknowledge that very point, that, that the space looks a little different than initially, initially...
In the drawings?
Yeah, and, and they're at ground level now. Initially, they seemed that they were up a little higher, and, and the fence obviously is, is a visual barrier. President Nisley?
I was just going to comment that, as Councilmember Fall indicated, the percent for art is a state program for projects more than $1 million, and so we had some public art at the roundabout, and so it would probably need to be restricted, we could find out from the funding agency, it would need to be restricted to that site, the wastewater treatment plant, because that's where the project was and the money's incurred. But I hear what you're saying, behind the chain-link fence on the low-set panels may not be the place, because maybe there could be something that's more visual, easily seen as you, one approaches the wastewater treatment plant area, so I hear the comments. Thank you.
Councilmember McGee?
I would like to agree wholeheartedly with Councilwoman Cochran's statement. I think there's a real problem when people have this incentive to have public art simply because there's money to have public art, and what we really need is to have the public art that inspires and draws people to Athens, that represents our community, should not be hidden away in places where nobody sees them. And it should not be the kind of thing that is just, people can pass by. I'll use an example, the fountain by the community center. It's a great thing to see a pretty decorated fountain, but it's, fountain is the kind of thing that people gather to, that it should be the center of a community rather than just a visual delight stuck off somewhere. So, I, I just feel overall the attitude of, and I'm not sure whether it's the art commission or council in general, or our whole attitude of everyone seems to be, let's just do this thing and pay for it and say we have another pretty thing in Athens. There's so much incredible art going on nationwide, and we're missing a real opportunity to, to attract people to Athens and make them see that Athens can be the high point on Ohio. This, in fact, this region, if we would just spend a little money in the right ways. So, again, I would applaud Councilwoman Cochran's statement there.
Thank you. Councilmember Reisner, followed by Councilmember Katsas.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the, where the ordinance reads is very specific. It says the WWTP clarifiers, it doesn't say anything else. I mean, if this ordinance passes, that's where that money goes, unless...
We amend.
We go back and have an amendment, or someone comes back for the recommendation. Otherwise, this becomes law. And so, you know, you can say anything you want about where you'd like to have the art or not, or whatever, but this is what we're voting on tonight, not something else.
Thank you. And my understanding again is that this is just, this has been an addendum to the previous past ordinance by adding the Stimson mural redesign. Councilmember Katsas?
Thank you. Just to, just to throw out another idea here, where else could you go in Ohio that you could ride your bike in a safe place and see, see some art? At least nobody's going to crash their car there. And, so, I mean, I mean, we could, we could get into details, we could, we could drag this out, but I don't, I don't see it as necessarily being hidden, but then again, you know, what kind of vehicle do I, do I drive? And I promised, I wasn't going to talk about bikes today. The second one, actually, my second question too was, the Stimson mural redesign, that's going to be a new design, it's not a refresh. Is that, okay?
Correct, yeah. And that would be, to answer your question, and then we have another comment from another councilman, but to answer your question, there would be a call for entries, it would be out, open to the public to offer designs, and then the process would go through similar processes as happened with the Richland Avenue Roundabout and the public art there as well. Councilmember Fall?
This is the third reading. This has come before this council in committee meetings, and I'm a little, I get concerned when council tries to, and especially because this is amendment to second-guess recommendations that have come forward from the commissions that we task with this sort of thing. I think that the percent for art is fairly specific about where the programs go. AMAC probably follows, if they, you know, they are people who are specialized in this sort of thing, and we appreciate the work that they do. But if the percent for art says on the project, then that kind of ties the hands of what AMAC has put forward as recommendations. I think that since this is an amendment to something that's already passed, that it's, we can get very nitpicky about the art that they have recommended, but that, that has, that whole process has already gone through, and it's gone through committee meeting, and this is an amendment which went through committee meetings and already two different readings. So, I think that if we, maybe what we need to do is have AMAC come in on a committee meeting and give us some future plans, maybe it's because there's just not that communication that's going on, but I think that since this has already gone through almost six hearings and committee meetings, because it's an amendment, that we need to trust with some, you know, what they know they have to do for percent for art, and, and knowing the limitations of where the piece of art's going forward.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Can I just clarify my statement about the clarifiers? Thank you. I, I don't, I really do appreciate the work of AMAC and their recommendations. I think the issue is that the execution of the project and the construction of the rails on the clarifiers and the ground level is such that the panels are not as visible as we thought they would be when we saw them in the original drawings, and so that's my concern. I certainly support the public art project. I'm just frustrated that the execution of the project means that, and hopefully the designs that come forward will be so, so bright that they'll be able to be seen easily.
I think every public area, when you come, when it comes to art, has limitations, you know, either traffic limitations where you can't make something so bright that people are, you know, distracted, or all those sort of limitations on what people have donated money for. I think that was a question with the fountain. So, it's, it, you know, we have to trust to some degree the artistic process, that they take the limitations of the canvas, so to speak, and work with it. And that's, art sometimes is, you know, kind of the art possibility, and sometimes you take a chance. And so, I think that they're working with the poet laureate of Athens, and so...
Thank you, councilmembers. We had a lively discussion. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 8416, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance is for second reading. Ordinance 7316, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11, Business Regulations, to add Chapter 11.12, Reduction of Single-Use Bags, and this is introduced by Councilmember Cochran.
Thank you, Acting President Butler. I move to table ordinance 7316 for the purpose of conducting a revision process so that we can factor in some of the feedback that we've received from the community and craft a more tenable ordinance that will benefit both our ecosystem and our community.
Second.
Second.
Okay. The motion is second to table, there's no discussion with table, tabling of the ordinance. All those in favor of tabling ordinance 7316, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the ordinance has been tabled.
I'd just like to say I appreciate, Member Cochran, that you were listening and willing to go and table something that you have worked on for quite a while, so...
Thank you. Moving on to resolution for second reading, R.0916, a resolution to place the issue of increasing the city income tax by 20 hundredths percent, .20 percent per annum, beginning January 1, 2017, on the ballot at the next general election on November 8, 2016, and directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Any questions or comments regarding the resolution? I'm going to pause briefly here before we jump into announcements and other businesses... because I have a question for the law director here. It appears that the paper version that I was handed by the clerk is different than the computer agenda, which has a public hearing listed for community development block grant, CD, BG, Small Cities Program, second hearing. Is that it? President Nysley?
The clerk of council, of course, she left this afternoon, or actually this morning, before noon, amended the agenda to remove that public hearing. And the public hearing will be held next, it's either next week or on the 20th.
Okay.
We will be having it. What happened was is that there wasn't sufficient time to put the press release out in the papers to allow the adequate notice for the hearing.
Thank you for clarification on that. Moving on to announcements and other business. So councilmembers, any committees wishing to meet? I believe we have transportation needs, I believe that our engineer acknowledged that there would be discussion with that.
Transportation Committee, me. Thank you.
Finance, personnel, I suppose.
Okay. Any other committees? I'll double check with safety services. Okay, moving on to opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda. I just want to acknowledge that if you are desiring to speak this evening, we just limit your comments to three minutes. I'll use a timer here on the phone. And please state your name and address at the podium. Anyone wishing to speak this evening? Sure. Thank you. And I won't start the clock until you're ready.
Thank you.
My name's Diana West, five, Coventry Lane, Athens. And before I, I want to preface this with, I am a recycler. I do, there's a, we're a family of five, one can of trash a week and the rest recycling. We also repurpose. But I do want to say, I'm very opposed to this proposal that you have for the 10 cents a bag. One, we're a family of five, and we can't afford that. I coupon and everything. And second, well, first of all, it's bad for businesses in Athens County, in the city of Athens. It's unfair fee on just a select amount of people that will be paying this fee. Those who live in the city of Athens and pay a water bill already pay a mandated recycle fee for paper and plastic. And number four, it's not enforceable. First of all, it's bad for business because you're forcing them to charge something that they are already providing for free. This causes customers to be disgruntled, to be charged an extra 10 cents a bag. People have already expressed, they're going to choose to shop elsewhere. It's easy to just drive over to the plains or drive, you know, to Parkersburg to purchase the things. That's going to hurt Athens, and it's going to hurt the businessmen and women. It puts extra work on the businesses. To put a line item thing on their computer or whatever it is they do to charge this is going to add a lot of work to the business people. You know, whether they have to hire more people to take care of this, or, you know, hire somebody to put it into the program, into the computer, you're placing a burden on the business people. Secondly, this is unfair because you're only billing a select amount of people. You've stated that you're not going to charge people who have a Snap card. They're going to be exempt. But I did some calling today, I know the people of, I called Carriage Apartments, and I also called Carpenter Hall. Neither apartment complex is providing recycling for their tenants. I know for a fact, five in the night of the 14 buildings at Carriage Apartment are subsidized housing. So these people that you're not billing the 10 cents per bag, they have no incentive to recycle. They have no place to recycle. It's all going into the dumpster and going into the landfill. I think what you want to do here is cut down on that, but you're not doing it. You're charging people, just a small amount of people, for this. Also, when I talked to the manager at Carriage Apartments, she said she would love to have some kind of recycling program there, but she hasn't been able to get anything going. Number three, as a resident of the city of Athens, my water bill right here, I pay $6.50 per month on refuge, $3.50 a month on recycling support fee, and a dollar a month on solid waste fee. These are mandatory fees that I have to pay. It's obvious, paper bags we can recycle, or they recycles. So I called the city of Athens, the number in the back here, and they told me today, yes, indeed, you can put your plastic bags in the recycle. So I'm only paying for it once, and then you want me to pay again? As I said before, I'm a family of five, I shop a lot. My three minutes is up? So anyway, I have a couple more things. I just want to say, do something positive. Don't punish people of Athens. Do the positive things, you know? Help apartment complexes come up with better ways to recycle. And there's one other thing. If you want to cut down on the ways, maybe change the week that there's unlimited, where you set out the trash at the curb, change it to the following week when the, after the students graduate, they're your students, we're on semesters now instead of quarters. And so that makes a whole lot more sense, and it's going to be a lot better for the community. But think of positive things, don't think of punishing us with our pocketbooks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please don't hesitate to email the rest of us on council.
I'm sorry, it's really hard to hear.
Sure. Please don't hesitate to email your comments as well, you know, to the rest of council.
I have emailed. I got a response back from Mrs. Eliasen, I think you reported to Ms. Cochrane, but I never heard back from you.
Wonderful. Because I know the three minutes is limiting, so.
Yeah, yeah. I should have talked faster.
You're fine.
But anyway, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any question, or, I'm sorry, future, sorry, more comments from citizens? Sure. Thank you. And again, if you could please state your name and your address and, I'm, three minutes, thank you.
I'm Tamika Lowtham, okay, 75787, Lively Ridge Road, Albany, Ohio. I am a business owner here in Athens, and actually just came here straight from work. And I've been hearing about the bag issue. Actually, the first time I read it in the paper, I was just like, wow. First off, being a business owner, everything down at our business is with the computer. So my question is, how do I keep track of this? If I order 500 bags, I put them in as a line code, do they have an inventory number? You know, I'm not sure how I keep track of all that. Who pays for it in my computer system? Who is exempt from it and what we do with that? Do I train employees how to do this? So these are a lot of questions I have as a business owner here in Athens City. I also feel that recycling is very well received in Athens County. I am a recycler myself, although I live in a rural area, I have recycling in the Albany area, and I bag my things up, and I take them there, and I recycle, and I do my part. I also reuse my little plastic shopping bags to load my small trash cans, and I hear many do that. So I feel like we repurpose, we recycle, and Athens County is great for that. I also feel as far as the area that we're in, a lot of poverty is here. And so Appalachian to come in and say, we're going to double the tax or the charge, I'm not sure what you're calling it, and I apologize if I'm not saying that right, but, you know, New York City is five cents, but Athens County, Appalachian, 10 cents, double of what rich people in New York City, many are going to be charged. Many places in California are charging 5 cents. So a lot of places I looked at were charging 5 cents, and we're looking at Appalachia, a small county, saying, no, we're going to give you 10 cents. And so, you know, I don't want to make financial obligations harder for the working class. The working class is what keeps our society moving, it's what keeps things going. And I just, I hate to see just a small amount of people having to pick up the total bill on this, where many of the residents in Athens City, including the businesses that have water bills or that, are already paying a recycling fee per se on our bill. And I've also, as the other lady spoke about, shopping, I hear from my customers, and they're like, wow, if this goes into effect, I'll just go out town to do my grocery shopping. And I want to see small business built up in Athens County, and I know that's also your desire as well. I don't want to see a hardship put on small business, but to have small business to be able to build up, and to be a small, locally owned and operated business is much more difficult because we are competing against larger companies all the time. And so now they're being asked to compete in another direction. And with my business, it is small business, and I am able to, you know, I'll just cut my bags out, and we recycle all of our cardboard boxes and put everything in cardboard boxes to give, and now we're no longer recycling my cardboard boxes, and those people will now take those home. So I know I realized the amount of time, I hope I said that quickly enough, and was able to communicate with you my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other comments?
Hi, Eric again. So a couple of weeks ago, Rick Sorensen, the code director, talked about the plastic bag issue, and I'm not going to speak to that matter, but he mentioned that there are about 5,300 rental properties in Athens, and I think he said he has five code enforcement officers. Two of those rental properties are mine, so I'm kind of shooting myself in the foot for suggesting this. But I would hope that you guys consider raising the rental permit to hire another code inspector so you can get the code inspections down from 18, 20 months to a year that they're supposed to. If you guys really care about the health and safety, that'd be a good, easy, low-hanging fruit that you guys can grab.
Thank you. Any other comments or opportunity to speak from community members? Okay. Having seen none, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So moved.
All those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.